Testing, testing. Andrew, can we check your microphone? Andrew, can you hear me? Testing. Ashley, Andrew, can you hear me? That's so weird.
Awesome.
Yeah, Karen says she can hear me. Testing, testing. Ashley, Andrew, can either of you hear me? Oh, undo your microphone for me. Let's try again. Testing, testing. Ashley, Andrew, can you hear me?
This is Andrew. I can, I can hear you.
I can hear you too, Marcy.
Thank you.
And welcome, everybody, to the Planning Commission meeting for December 10th. We would like to call the order, and we'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you. Can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Kogler?
Here.
Commissioner Neal?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Connolly?
Here.
Commissioner Marlowe? Commissioner Kovarubius? Chairperson Christensen?
Here.
Record will reflect that Commissioners Kovarubius and Marlowe are absent.
Thank you. May we have staff presentation? I'm sorry, staff introductions, please.
Marcy Reynoso and Ashley Peterson, administrative assistants.
Warren Fraice, Community Development Director, and tonight I'd like to introduce Leslie Frazier. She is our new city engineer. She's replaced David Athie, and I think Leslie will just come up and say hi.
Good evening. Did you want me to say that or something? Okay, sure. So, I wasn't sure. My name is Leslie Frazier. I started my new role here as city engineer, and I'm excited to be here. Thankful to have the opportunity to meet you and excited about serving our new community here. Thanks so much.
Great, thank you. Welcome.
I'm Katie Bannister, Associate Planner.
This is Andrew Paulso from the City Attorney's Office.
Okay, thank you very much. Any general public comments regarding matters that are not on agenda tonight? You can come up and speak if there is anybody with the, would like to speak? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to agenda items proposed to be tabled or rescheduled?
Yes, we had noticed for an item for a time extension for Sky River RV, that will be rescheduled and renoticed on a future agenda.
Great, thank you, Warren. Okay, so moving on to public hearings. Let's move on to the first item on the agenda. It's the tentative parcel map for 2907 Oak Street. Do we have a staff presentation, please?
Thank you, Chairperson Christensen. As you said, this is for a tentative parcel map. This is a subdivision of one lot into two parcels located at 2907 Oak Street and also 2926 and 2928 Pine Street. So, looking at the location, this is between 28th and 30th Street on, but it, the lot spans between Vine and Oak Street, as you can see in the image here. So, this is just north of the municipal pool and just east of the New Habitat for Humanity project that's just completing. There are three existing units on the site. There's a single-family residence that faces Oak Street, and there's also a duplex that faces Vine Street. The project is within the Uptown Town Center specific plan in the T3N zoning district. Taking a look at the subdivision history, so the property was involved in the original subdivision of the city. North of 24th Street, there was a slightly different lotting pattern than was present south of 24th Street. So, this was part of that pattern. There were, I believe, two lots that were, that fronted Vine Street. It's hard to see in that image on the left. And then in 1891, the area in yellow there on the left was re-subdivided. So, just a couple of years later, this area was re-subdivided into 18 lots. And they introduced another street in between that became Oak Street. An alley was placed to the east of that, but there was no alley placed between Vine and Oak Street at that time. And the property that we're looking at was Lot 15, and it continues today as it has been since 1891. Looking at the, at the area, this is a current map, so the, that's in that same block in the block between Vine and Oak Street of the nine lots that were created back in 1891. Five of those have already been subdivided, so that there's a lot that faces Oak Street and a lot that faces Vine Street. So, this subdivision would actually follow the pattern of what has been done on most of the lots in this block. So, jumping in to look at the actual tentative parcel map, so the red line is the boundary of the existing lot, the lot that was created back in 1891. So, there is an existing single-family residence, that's in blue, an existing duplex, that's in yellow. And then the red line is the, the introduced line where the subdivision would occur. It does leave adequate rear setback for the zoning district standards. 10 feet is the required distance, so the duplex would get a 10-foot rear setback. The single-family residence would get a slightly larger setback of just over 11 feet. In addition, there is a public, or excuse me, a utilities easement proposed on the south end of Parcel 1. The, the electricity for Parcel 2 does come from Vine Street. So, this utilities easement would allow the utilities for Parcel 2 to travel from Vine Street and serve the single-family residents on Oak Street. There are not a huge number of standards, subdivision standards in the Uptown Town Center specific plan, but the, the plan does say that the purpose is to, the purpose of the subdivision standards in the uptown plan are to preserve passerable urban fabric of small walkable blocks that are defined by an interconnected and human-scaled street network. The subdivision really doesn't have any negative effect on that, that section. This continues to have the same street and circulation pattern today would have in the future as it does today. Something important, we get a lot of inquiries about subdividing lots in the Uptown Town Center specific plan. The second bullet there precludes a lot of subdivision in the, in the specific plan. If a lot has both alley and street frontage, the subsequent lots are, do have to have both alley and street frontage. In this case, there's no alley access, and so that standard also does not apply. Jumping into some more of the standards, there is a table in the Uptown Town Center specific plan about the appropriate size of lots for different building types. As I've stated, there is a single-family residence and a duplex on the lot. There are some lot widths, both minimums and maximums. The single dwelling will have a slightly oversized lot, but that's an existing width, and there is an existing dwelling there, so we're not introducing any new non-conforming situations. This is just an existing situation, but just wanted the Planning Commission to be aware that those are the minimum and maximum lot sizes for those building types. We already talked a bit about the setback requirements. These buildings largely do meet the setbacks. There are some, I believe, one of the side yards is a little less than five feet on, I think it's on the single dwelling. But that is an existing situation, again, not introducing any new non-conforming standards. And as we saw on the, the site plan, the rear yard setback is 10 feet, and that's the only new property line that's being introduced, and both lots would meet that minimum rear yard setback. There is a lot of emphasis in the Uptown Town Center specific plan about where vehicles should be parked. This is a fully developed lot, and so it's really not possible to, to meet these standards as the lot has developed, but even with future development, it would be really hard to correct these, these issues because the lot does not have alley access. The specific plan wants all the parking to come from the alley when possible. And then when not possible, garages are meant to be set back from the front plane of the building. We're not, this project is not proposing any new development. It's just the existing buildings would stay as is, and a new, a new lot line would be introduced in between. So, these, these standards, although future development would be subject to them, the subdivision would not bring the project into non-conformance. And here's a look at those non-conforming, the non-conforming situations. So, the garages for the, this is, this is the duplex that's facing Vine Street, the existing duplex. This is existing. The garages are kind of the prominent feature of the building, and that is existing and would not change with the subdivision. On the Oak Street side, it's a single-family dwelling, and the garage is actually set back a bit with a driveway going to it. So, this, this building is closer to being in conformance. There is, there are open space requirements. Because of the size of the backyard, both the single dwelling and the duplex will be able to meet those, those minimum standards even with the subdivision. So, the, the draft resolution that is in the staff report this evening includes some, some conditions that would have to be completed before the, the final parcel map could be recorded. The first is that the utility service lines for each parcel, the, the electricity and any cable lines going to both the duplex and the resident, the single-family residence would have to be undergrounded. There are the potential for frontage improvements. There are existing curb gutter and sidewalk on both Oak and Vine Streets, but they are not entirely ADA compliant. And so, the, the improvements would have to be brought into compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act having to do with slope. And then there is also new standards that sidewalks have to sort of wrap around the, the driveway ramp. And so, this is a, one of the features that is going to be needed on, I think, at least Vine Street and possibly Oak as well. It's anywhere, anywhere that the sidewalk is not in compliance, they will have to be brought up to current code. There's some minor trimming of bushes at the southwest corner of the lot that would need to be completed. Currently, the electrical meters for all three units are located on the side of the duplex. Condition number eight would require the electrical meter for the single-family residence to be moved onto the lot where the house is located, so that the electrical meters for each unit are on the lot where the unit is located. And finally, there is an underground, excuse me, there is an overhead line that runs above the sidewalk on Vine Street. It appears to be a telecommunication or a cable line, and that line would also need to be underground. The conditions do not require the, there are some additional overhead utilities that serve a number of residences along Vine Street, and those are not proposed to be undergrounded, just the, that cable line that runs along the frontage of this, of the subject lot on Vine Street. As always, to approve a project, the Planning Commission must make findings. There are kind of a long list in, in, in this resolution. Essentially, the findings are that the, the subdivision is, is consistent with the neighborhood and all the standards that are required in, in our general plan, in the Uptown Town Center specific plan, and in the zoning ordinance, and that the site is physically suitable for the type of development and the subdivision that's proposed. There is a finding, finding number nine. Often with parcel maps, the improvements that are required can be postponed until the lot is developed. In this case, the lot has been developed, and so Planning Commission will be making a finding that fulfillment of the construction requirements for this parcel map, which is those ADA improvements on the sidewalk and undergrounding of the utilities, those would need to occur prior to the recordation of the final map because they're necessary for orderly development of the neighborhood. So, the Planning Commission has options. The first would be to approve the project by adopting the draft resolution in the staff report this evening, and that you would be making, you would be adopting that resolution based on the findings that we just went through and subject to the conditions of approval that we've gone through. You, of course, could amend the, the conditions of approval and approve that, that amended resolution. You could refer the project back to either the DRC or, or to staff if you need additional information, or if the Planning Commission does not feel that the project can meet the required findings, you could adopt findings of denial to not allow the project. Staff is recommending that you approve the project this evening by approving the draft resolution based on the findings and subject to those conditions of approval. That concludes my report.
Great, thanks, Katie. We'll start with some questions for staff. If any Commissioners have any questions for Katie at this time? Or any other staff?
Katie, just for context, is this probably the only block where we don't have an alley access? Or are there some other places in our community? I know it's separate from this application, but just give me a sense of, will we have it there? Just coming along the way.
There are quite a few lots here and there that don't have alley access. Before the 1950s, people could move lot lines around without oversight from the city, and so those situations definitely exist. We definitely want to, if, if we were looking at a situation where we had a street and then an alley, staff would not recommend approval of this, this parcel map where we introduce a lot line, and then, you know, the one lot would not have access to a street. But in this case, they have street access on both sides, but it, it's not unusual. It's, it's not the norm, but it's not unusual to have a situation with no alley.
Okay, thank you. And then you said some, several others have already subdivided on that block?
Yes, it's been, you know, many years. It's not, it's not recently, but yes. Five of the nine original block, lots in this block have been subdivided similar to this.
Thank you.
Commissioner Connolly?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, my questions are related to the utility easement that's needed through there. What are, what's there now, and is there any utilities that need to be added? And is there some type of utilities that are on the other property that we don't have an easement to? Can you touch on the utility and need for utility easements? What's there? What's coming?
Sure. The only utility that needs to be moved is electricity. Currently, the electricity comes overhead from Vine Street to both the duplex and then over to the, to the, the single-family residence on Oak Street. Both water and, and sewer for each unit come from its respective street. So, we won't need to, the wet utilities won't need to be moved. It's really just the electrical utilities. You can see, it's not super easy to see, the utility easement really, at this point, will just be for electricity. So, they'll be bringing, there's a power line at the southwest corner of the lot. They'll be bringing the power down, and then underground, there's two meters that will serve the duplex, and then there'll be an electrical line that'll go to Parcel 2 to serve the single-family residence. So, it's just electricity.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kogler, question for staff?
Thank you, Chair. Just a clarification question. Since this is in a form-based code district, there is no minimum lot size here. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. There is a minimum lot width. Like I said, the lot width isn't changing in this case, and so there's no, you know, there's no change of that, but there is no minimum lot size, no.
I had one question clarification, Katie, just back to the utilities. So, the sewer lines were probably already separate on this particular project? And if not, was there an easement required for that?
They are separate. It's not super easy to see, so I'll use the pointer. So, for the single-family residence, you see, I don't know if you can see this line. It says SS. That's sanitary sewer, so that's going out here to, to Oak Street. And then on the, on, on the Vine Street side, you can see sanitary sewer. There's two lines going. Here's one for one duplex, and then here's one for the second.
Thank you. I can see that. Appreciate it. Any other questions for staff and Commissioners? If not, I'll move on to the applicant, the applicant here tonight. Like to make any comments? Please come on up to the podium. No? Good? Go ahead.
I'm Carrie Morgeson with MBS Land Surveys, and we're representing Mrs. Zammadi. We don't really have anything to add to the presentation, except we are asking you to take a look at condition number nine and change the word utility to telecommunication, so that there's no confusion later on when they go to underground that line, that they know that it's just limited to the telecommunication line and not the electrical wires that are also up there.
Change utility to what was your request?
Condition number nine?
Yes.
It says utility lines. It should just say telecommunication line.
Okay.
Because it doesn't include the electrical lines.
Thank you.
Sorry, I, I was, the, I talked to Dante Paganino, who's the Development Services Engineer. His recommendation was that instead of changing overhead utility line, that we change it just to be on the east side of the street so that we've got our bases covered. We think it's a cable line, a telecommunication line, but he just wanted to make, he thought identifying the location of the line was better than identifying what the line is, just in the case that it's been misidentified, I believe.
Okay, great. Thank you.
We would agree with that.
Okay. Any other, you're good. Any other comments?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thanks. I'll bring it back to the Commission. The Commissioners have any questions of the applicant? Seeing none. We'll open it up for public comment. Does anyone like to speak on this project? Please come up to the podium. Is there anybody online, Marcy?
No callers.
No callers. We'll bring it back to the Commission. And would the Commission like to discuss it? Vote on it? Do I hear a motion? Any, any comments?
I will make a motion. I was on DRC and had all of my questions answered there.
Commissioner Neal?
Sorry.
It's okay.
Now, I should actually wait.
You're good.
You're kidding me. But I'd like to make a motion to approve, let me get to the motion area. Approve the tentative parcel map, PR 23-0046 by adopting draft resolution PC 24xxx based on findings and subject to the condition of approval with the adjusted verbiage for condition number nine.
I'll second that. Kogler will second that? Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Neal?
Aye.
Commissioner Kogler?
Aye.
Commissioner Connolly?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Chairperson Christensen?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Good luck. Move on to item number two on the agenda. And it's naming Norma's Alley. Could we have a presentation?
Good evening, Chairperson Christensen and Commissioners. My name is Paul Sloan, Economic Development Manager. Thank you for the opportunity to present this proposal this evening. We'll be discussing the east-west alleyway between Park and Pine Street and 12th and 13th. That is colloquially referred to as Norma's Alley after Norma Moy, the long-term executive director for the Downtown Main Street Association, whose office is located there in the alley. In 2019, City Council approved a public arts encroachment permit and for installing an artistic arch at the Pine Street entrance to the alleyway. In 2022, the archway was installed with the name prominently visible there of Norma's Alley, which further enforced the notion that this is Norma's Alley. However, the alley still remained officially unnamed. There are a number of businesses in the alleyway, including the offices of Main Street, but also a couple tasting rooms and a very popular local restaurant. Because the alley is unnamed, their addresses are out on 12th Street, which creates something of a challenge for their customers trying to find them, especially if they're looking up on the internet or using an app, and they find themselves out on 12th Street. Potentially, this can also be a challenge for emergency services. If we have an incident in the alleyway and emergency services end up out on 12th Street, that could create delays, et cetera. So, to minimize the challenges for customers and as well to improve emergency services, the city has initiated this action to officially name the alley as Norma's Alley. On the dais in front of you, you have a copy of the five-year Economic Development Strategic Plan, which Council approved in July. Just real briefly, the document encompasses five key initiatives and 75 specific action items to be implemented over the next five years. The five key initiatives are civic engagement, business retention, civic innovation, sorry, business retention and expansion, workforce development, placemaking and infrastructure, and multifamily housing development. The graphic of the map on the right of the slide here is from page 51, which is the section on placemaking. This one highlights one of the 10 focus areas in the EDSP document. This one happens to be the downtown area, which we're discussing tonight. Some of the aspects of this placemaking program, as you can see here, include lighting improvements, railroad district improvements, alleyway beautification, as well as pedestrian connectivity with the idea to increase the appeal and the walkability of our downtown core. The dotted line just to the north of the park is the alleyway that we're speaking about this evening. So, the proposal of giving a proper place name, which is fundamental for placemaking, is in alignment with the EDSP. Real briefly, for anybody who happens to watch this online, if you'd like a copy of the Economic Development Strategic Plan, you can scan this QR code, or alternatively, go to the city website at prcity.com and just in the search bar, type in EDSP, and you can download a copy of the document. In accordance with the public notification, we published the notification in the news. We mailed out notification cards to the businesses within 300 feet of the alleyway, and we publicly, we posted notices in multiple places in the alleyway as well. The businesses, we reached out, staff contacted all of them. They're very supportive of this proposal, and they look forward to the opportunity to have an address which matches their physical location. And several of the businesses also wrote letters of support, which you find included in the staff report here this evening. Passerables Municipal Code states that all street names shall be as approved by the Planning Commission, which is why we're here presenting to you this evening. Passerables, Emergency Services, and the Police Department have no objections to the naming. We did a county-wide search. There are no street names that conflict in passerables. There's a Norma Lane in Pismo and another Norma Lane in Grover Beach, but there are no permutations of the name Norma on any streets here in Paso. There's no significant fiscal impact to the city to name an unnamed alley. There's minimal administrative costs. It's just publishing the public notice and mailing out the postcards. These administrative costs will be taken from the economic development budget. Naming Norma's Alley officializes a place name already in common local use. It aligns with the EDSP's placemaking initiative. It improves emergency response, minimizes confusion for visitors, supports local businesses, and honors an iconic roadlet. The options before you this evening are, number one, to approve the official name. you this evening are number one, to approve the official naming of Norma's Alley by adopting the draft resolution. Number two, to reject the official naming of Norma's Alley and break Norma's heart just before Christmas. Or option number three, refer the project back to staff, traditional analysis. Staff recommends option number one, approve the official naming of Norma's Alley by draft resolution. With that, we have to answer any questions.
Thank you, Paul. Commissioners have any questions?
Just a quick one, Paul. The renaming is just that. Unfortunately, it probably doesn't mean there's more funding available for alley improvements and beautification and so forth. It would seem that's the next step that needs to occur.
Yes, that's correct.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Yes. So does it automatically correct it with the post office? And how quickly can we get these businesses getting, you know, directed? And I mean, how will that work?
Sure. I'll refer to Katie Manister, who can answer that question in detail.
We'll need to send out a letter to, we have a mailing list of folks that we send out when we make changes to the addressing in our community. It's not instantaneous. We do often send out an address letter and then we'll get some questions, but we put out the information as best we can, and then we answer questions as best we can. So it'll probably take a little while for it to, you know, hit Google Maps, but it'll be in all the city's infrastructure, GIS and so forth, in, you know, in a week or two.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Conley?
Thank you, Chair. I just have a minor question. Will there, besides the fancy overhead sign, is there any additional signs that need to be, like flag signs that need to be on posts that will be put up saying Norma's Alley?
That's a possibility. We might have to put up some signs. I'd spoken with the city planner, Darren Nash, and he had said that might be a possibility as well. There's currently a sign on the wall as you come in from Pine Street, which says Norma's Way or the highway. And so we want to make sure there's no confusion between Norma's Way and Norma's Alley. So if people are looking for the turnoff, if you're driving a car, you may not see the arch, so we'd probably have something visible at street level, yes.
Thank you. That was, the question I was going to have is suggestion of maybe having a signage off of Park Street, but you guys got that answered. Okay, is there any other questions for staff from commissioners? No? Okay, thank you, Paul. Norma, did you want to say anything? Or did you want to wait for public comment? Well, we appreciate that, too. Then we'll get right to it, then. Why don't we take it out to public comment right now, and you can come on up to the podium if you'd like? That'd be great.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Jeffrey Wiesinger. I'm the owner of Jeffrey's Wine Country Barbecue, currently located at 819 12th Street, Suite B on Google Maps. I'm also the president of the Board of Directors of the Paso Robles Main Street Association. And speaking on behalf of the Main Street Association, we are honored and delighted that the city has taken these steps to officially name the alley in Norma's honor. As many of us know, she is a beloved figure in Paso Robles, one of the most influential people in the downtown district, for sure. Her role in local businesses in the community has been immeasurable. So the Main Street Association is in full support of this and appreciates what the city's been able to do. Myself, as well, speaking as a business owner in the alley, yeah, this was a big risk for us to take on in 2018 when we got an opportunity to open a restaurant in an alley. It's been a tough road as far as getting our name out, but the world lives on the internet, and that's how we have to constantly be putting ourselves out there. And this step of officially naming it Norma's Alley is going to provide a lot more clarification to the community, to locals, you know, to locals alike. So we've gotten a lot of positive feedback from our customers. I've also spoken with Raymond Smith. He can't be here today, but he's in Belize selling some wine, and we're very happy that he's getting the Paso name out internationally. But he was also very much in favor of this naming. This is going to be a tremendous help to our businesses as far as getting out there on the internet so people aren't so confused about walking up and down 12th Streets, and I hear that pretty regularly. And Paul had also mentioned the importance of emergency services. That has always been a concern of mine, and we've already had a couple instances where it was confusing. So getting this name officially on the books is going to help our community, help our businesses, and be an honor to the Main Street Association. So I appreciate your consideration. Hope we're able to get it.
Thank you very much. Marcy, do we have anybody online?
No, there's no callers.
Okay. Bringing it back to the commission for any comments or motions.
Sure.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, it's my honor. I would like to encourage the planning commission to support me in this. I make a motion to approve the official naming of Norma's Alley, SNM 24-01, by adopting draft resolution PC 24, whatever the rest of it is. And it's always been Norma's Alley in my mind. It was official already, but let's make it official on the books for the businesses.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Conley?
Yeah.
Second's that motion.
Thank you.
We have a roll call, please.
We have a discussion?
Yes. Mr. Sloan is always so efficient. I notice he's got roll call vote on there, but he forgot to put on round of applause after roll call vote.
All right. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Conley?
Aye.
Commissioner Kogler?
Aye.
Commissioner Neal?
Aye.
Chairperson Christensen?
Absolutely.
Motion passes five zero.
Sure, let's take a quick picture real quick. Come on back.
We can go out there.
Quick pause of the meeting. All right, thank you for that. We'll bring the meeting back to order. Again, thank you, So we will move on to discussion items. We having discussion items tonight, Warren?
There is no items to discuss tonight.
Okay, consent calendar. Commissioners, have any corrections or changes to the consent calendar? Or do we need to, can we get a motion? Move approval of consent calendar?
I move that we approve the consent calendar as shown.
Kogler seconds? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Conley?
Aye.
Commissioner Kogler?
Aye.
Commissioner Neal?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Chairperson Christensen?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Moving on to other reports. Do we have any information, new information on the Paso Robles Streetscape ad hoc committee report?
We have no report tonight on that item.
Thank you. Moving on to housing constraints and opportunity?
Yeah, the Housing Constraints Committee met last month on November 14th. The key item they looked at was the multifamily residential accelerator program map. So that's part of the economic development strategic plan that Mr. Sloan handed out tonight, which was a program to identify sites that the city could potentially change zonings or provide other incentives that would accelerate multifamily development in the community. The council has a goal of an additional 100 rental units per year. So the HCOC did look at that map, gave us some feedback. Right now, there's about two dozen potential sites that have been identified. So those sites are going to be briefed out to the city council, and then I believe the council will probably send direction back to commission and staff in terms of how to move some of those projects forward in the future. So there's more to come on that.
Great, thanks, Warren. How about the Development Review Committee rotation schedule? And I don't know, do we have a copy visible there, Marcy? Does anybody need any changes to it at this time? Can I always address it?
Do we have the schedule for 2025 yet?
We have it just up until the reorganization.
Yeah, so it's only first month or two. Okay, so seeing none right now, we can always reach out to each other if we need to cover. Go ahead, Commissioner Neal.
The January members are, I think I am too, but if you, do you have? Okay, okay.
Great, thank you for that, Marcy. Moving on to planning commissioner's comments, and why don't we start with Mr. Kogler? Do you have any comments tonight? Commissioner Neal?
I just would like to compliment the city on hitting it absolutely out of the ballpark with the lighting on the park. It was, you could actually read a book without a flashlight down there now, but it is, it is pretty amazing. And I think it will attract a lot of folks to the park. So that's it for me.
Commissioner Conley?
I have no comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, I would just like to echo that. We talked about place-making tonight. I think that light, the lighting in our downtown park is really attracting a lot of interest. So kudos to staff. I don't know, would that be Frida? Or, okay, please pass the word along.
Frida.
Okay. It's very nice, and I'm sure Main Street is very excited about that spot.
Commissioner Christensen here. I wanted to say I had some guests come into town for the lighting ceremony, and they were just absolutely blown away. They couldn't believe that, you know, our park could look so amazing and stunning. And so it was quite fun, and it was, it's beautiful every night. So I really, kudos to the city for that. And I'm really happy for Norma, and I want to say thank you to the city for doing that. I think it's fantastic. Paul, I think that was a wonderful presentation. And I had a question for Katie with that project. This is out of curiosity, the last tentative map project. Did you find the new zoning code to be helpful, or did the applicants feel it was helpful in that process?
The project's in the Uptown Town Center specific plan, so the new zoning ordinance would not apply for the most part.
So there was nothing really that's part of the new zoning that changed for that?
No.
Okay, I was curious about that, to see if there was anything that would fall under that new category. All right, Commissioner Kogler, I think he has another comment.
Katie, tell them about the DRC meeting we had on Monday.
We did have a site plan modification. The first time we've taken the new entitlement known as a modification, went to the DRC this Monday, as Mr. Kogler mentioned.
Yep, I was there. That was fascinating. It was a good point. I think it went pretty smooth, in my opinion, for the most part. So, any other comments, Commissioner Conley?
Yeah, I just remembered a comment I wanted to bring up. I don't know if the city has a policy or policing, but there's a lot of signs that go up on telephone poles that I think are informal, like Christmas lighting, call this number, so-and-so construction or guarding service. And I noticed that on, like, Charley at River, South River Road. You see a telephone pole with all these signs, and I think it clutters the neighborhood up. And I don't know if there's anything we can do about that.
So those aren't permitted. Typically, like Public Works will pick those up occasionally, but usually it's kind of complaint-driven. But based on this, your comments, I will forward that concern, and we'll see if we can kind of redouble our efforts on picking those up.
Okay. I would also want to say welcome to our new city engineer. So thank you again. Moving on to staff comments.
Yeah, just a couple update items for you real quick. So the next regular meeting would be Christmas Eve, so we're canceling that planning commission meeting. So this is the last meeting of this year. Beginning in the new year, we're going to be recruiting for planning commissions, so we have two seats that need to be either reappointed or filled. So we'll start rolling out the information for appointments. I think Commissioner Davis is termed out, if I recall right. Yeah, so you're nine years. Congratulations. We'll be wrapping up.
Yeah, I don't need an alley. That's Norma's Alley.
But not till March, so you got another couple months. So based on the application process, the council will be doing interviews on February 12th and making appointments. The terms will start on March 1st. We'll do the reorganization dinner, which is the tradition, on March 2nd. So Marcy's working on that, and we'll get information out on reservations and whatnot. And then the League of California Cities Planning Commission Academy will be March 5th through 7th up in Santa Rosa. So if any of the existing commissioners are interested in attending, let Marcy know so we can get your reservations made as soon as possible on that. And then finally, the Boys School Project, also known as the Landing. We're very close to releasing the EIR for recirculation. They've revised the project, so that's why we had to redo the EIR. We expect that'll probably be out sometime in January for public review, 45-day public review process, and then that'll move us toward scheduling hearings with commission and council. And I think that'll conclude staff's report.
Thank you, Warren. Moving on for an adjournment. Do I have a motion for adjournment? Commissioner Neal, adjourns? Motion to adjourn. Do we have a second from Commissioner Davis? And we will get a roll call. Everybody's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Have a great night.